The August 5th, 2020 meeting of the Norfolk School Committee shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternate public access to this meeting shall be done via online video conferencing. This application will allow users to view the meeting and provide comments during the allocated windows as outlined in the board's public comment policy. To join, follow the web link, call or dial a number below. The meeting will be livestreamed on YouTube and will be recorded for future broadcasts by Norfolk Community Television. And as we start out every meeting, we read the mission statement. "The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide education, inspires lifelong learners, and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world." Call please.
Madora Champagne.
Jennifer Win.
Shannon Manassas.
Sarah Ward.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Alardi.
Alright, so we obviously have a lot of people on here, so we're going to do a little bit different. As this is certainly a unique meeting in a new time, so this necessitates sort of a unique format. So we're going to do public comment beforehand. I understand there may be many questions that arise during the presentation. What I'd ask is people to type those in the chat, and then we will get to those as it progresses. So that will give everyone an opportunity to have their questions answered, their concerns addressed, and everything like that. So, do we have any public comments before we start the meeting? And just a reminder, in event we do, please state your name, address. Keep your comments to three minutes or less if possible. And please understand, we may not directly respond to what you're asking, but we will certainly try to address anything that comes up. So if anyone has any public comments, now is the time.
Thomas, we're just going to remind people if they have public comment to unmute their mic. And then to keep your mics muted at all other times because we are getting some feedback from from people who have logged into the call who have their mics unmuted.
Yes, that's a good reminder. So everyone, if you could please, if you haven't already done so, mute. So we can eliminate the background noise. It's going to be very difficult in some cases for everybody to hear. We want to ensure everyone can hear. So please make sure you mute it if you haven't already done so. Alright, so.
Hi.
We do not have any correspondents.
Do you guys hear me? Yeah.
Yes.
I do think we have a public comment.
Oh, we do? Okay, I'm sorry.
Hi, this is Kristen Ballish. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. I did send a public comment correspondence earlier, but it may not have gotten through to Mr. Doyle. So is this an appropriate time if it's a comment versus a question? Just to clarify the use of this time. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I did send this email earlier, but I figured I would share it in person since I was able to make it. This is Kristen Ballish, 15 Kingsbury Road. Dear Norfolk School Committee, thank you for taking on the unenviable task of deciding a safe path forward for our students, teachers, and everyone that works in our local school system in any capacity. My oldest child will be entering kindergarten this fall, and she is very excited. As a new parent, you know, entering kind of the school system, I've been incredibly impressed by the frequency and specificity of the communication I've been getting. Even when it says we aren't saying anything and we don't know anything, it's good to even get those emails. So I just want to really say I appreciate those that I've been getting. I understand that you'll be voting on whether the schools return under a hybrid or fully remote model at first this evening. And I do trust the committee to make the right choice based on the latest information available and what resources the district has at its disposal. What I would like to comment on in particular is if the hybrid model is selected, I would ask that you make masks mandatory for all age groups. My understanding is that for K to 2, the state is allowing the district to decide. Otherwise, it's only mandatory after grade 2 otherwise. For reference, I have a child in daycare. My five-year-old has been in daycare. And in daycares and preschools right now, and camps, masks are mandatory for age 2 and over. So there will be children who have worn masks all summer in preschool or camps who may enter kindergarten or other grades this fall, and then all of a sudden not be required to wear a mask. That level of inconsistency, I think, would send mixed messages to the children and would also be hard to explain to my child why they must wear a mask, but another class might may not. And schools often have public health requirements to protect the greater good. For instance, I had to submit vaccination records for my child to enter kindergarten, and I do feel like this should be no different of a choice. Many people will point to the low COVID cases in children, which I understand based on the data. But there is also new data from the past week that suggests children can be asymptomatic, yet carry COVID in greater concentrations in their body than adults. We also know that older children over 10 can get COVID at the same rate as adults. And I imagine there are children in our school system that have older siblings but will be in the younger grades. To protect the safety of teachers and staff and the families that they come home to, it is imperative that all children in all age groups wear their masks while in school. To be clear, I know that we all hope whatever is decided tonight is temporary in nature, and everyone wants to return to in-person schooling, whatever it is safe to do so. What is also clear is that the best way to reach that goal quickly is to keep reducing the numbers of cases in our community. And if a hybrid model is what is selected tonight, that means not compromising on the safety measures that go along with that decision. And so I just ask that you please vote to mandate masks for all age groups in the system. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the comment.
Okay.
We still have a few people unmuted. If you could mute all, please.
Hi, this is Tais Hickman, 31 Fredericksson Road. I have a comment, if I may.
Sure.
There's more of a question. So I did review the last recording from the last meeting. And I heard about the various models that you're considering and will be voting on tonight. What I didn't hear is how you are going to accommodate special education students. So I was wondering if you can address that tonight. And then also, in response to the previous comment, if you do go in the direction of mandating masks, how are you going to? Or what does that mean for the children with special education needs that may not be able to tolerate masks? So I think that's important as well. So I'm not sure if you are able to address that tonight, but I would be very much interested in hearing that.
I think that's something.
Happy to address both in the presentation, if that's okay, Thomas.
Great, thank you.
Alright. Okay, it looks like, I think we're good to go. And as I said, if any other questions come up during this, please don't hesitate to chat, to put those in the chat, and then we'll certainly go over all of those. So I think at this point, we'll let Dr. Lardy take over. And I guess we'll go with the, you want to go with the presentation first, Dr. Lardy, or?
Yeah, we had the vote on the school calendar first, but I'm happy to do the presentation and then come back to the calendar. Or we can move forward the calendar discussion first, if you prefer.
I think.
Jen, I was wondering if we could do the calendar first, because I know there are a number of parents who are on the 6:30 KT call. So I'm wondering if we even given them five extra minutes. It might be a benefit for them. So that they can hear the reopening, that they have kids in middle school as well as elementary.
Sure.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, so we'll just stay with the order of listed in the agenda. The first item tonight is a vote on a revised school calendar. In the school committee packets, you all have a draft of the new calendar. And I'm just going to highlight some of the changes that you will see in that school calendar. So at the direction of the Mass Department of Education, all districts have been asked to add 10 full professional development days to the start of the school year in order to provide comprehensive training for all of our staff and teaching staff on new safety protocols, as well as changes to the curriculum and technology training to support the potential remote learning that may happen over the course of the year. And also to give grade levels and teachers time to connect with students and families. So per the direction of the Mass Department of Education, we are recommending putting all of those calendar days as required at the start of the school year, which would change the student's start date to September 14. Other changes that we would be making to the calendar is that we would be recommending canceling the previously scheduled half-days of professional development that were scheduled in October and in March, and making those full days of school for students. We are also recommending delaying parent conferences and report cards by a week as we are starting the school year two weeks late. And then the only other change that you would see on the calendar is typically we have a professional development day scheduled in May. In the case that the district decides to implement a hybrid model or has to revert to a hybrid model at any time during the course of the year, Wednesday would be a remote learning day for students. So we're recommending moving that May PD day from Friday to Wednesday so that it would not impact any in-person learning time for children. So with that said, all other calendar days are remaining the same. Primary changes being the delayed start to September 14, the cancellation of the October and the March professional development days, and the change of the May professional development day from a Friday to a Wednesday. That would make the last day of school for students the 14th of June, and the 15th of June would be a final professional development day for staff. Have any questions from the committee?
Alright, do we have a motion to accept the revised calendar as presented?
I do have a question.
Well, hold on, let's get a motion first, and then we'll get to a question. So we have a motion to accept the revised calendar as presented?
I move to accept the revised calendar as presented.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
And now does Jen win?
No, I just have a question. I remember last year, we moved the report cards up because there was an issue with teachers. And I'm afraid I can't toggle back and forth because I'll mess up my connection, so I'm leaving it exactly as is. Is that, to be clear, that, that that's not an issue again this year by moving it, that they're not spending their Thanksgiving doing report cards?
So report cards will be issued after the Thanksgiving break on the Friday after the Thanksgiving break. We have shared this calendar with the Teachers Association. They have reviewed it and are comfortable with the recommended changes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the change?
Hi.
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 Alright, motion passes, and now we'll move on to the discussion.
Okay, great. I'm going to shift over to the presentation. I know people are anxious to hear more about the three district reopening plans that we were required to develop for the state. So I have information and details on each of those three plans that I'll share with the school committee and the public tonight. And I will also share what our recommendation is at this time, based on the current data and the current state of COVID in Massachusetts, for the first six to eight weeks of school for fall reopening. After the presentation, I'm happy to take any questions from the public. Again, I think we are asking people to type those questions into the chat box because as people unmute themselves, it's very difficult for other people on the call to hear. So I'll start with the presentation. If you have questions, please type them into the chat, and at the end of the presentation, I can take those questions. I'm going to present the screen now so everybody can see. Check them up in just a second. Are you able to see the screen at this time?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, great. So we will go ahead and get started then. So I want to start tonight by just expressing my sincere appreciation to all of the members of our reopened District Reopening Committee who have volunteered a lot of time and effort over the summer to contribute to our planning. We have quite a few teachers who have been part of the committee, teachers representing all grade levels and various roles. The teachers have been working really hard on developing a plan for our remote learning. They have also been working on gathering feedback from staff on professional development and program needs and have come into the buildings to take a look and provide feedback on model classrooms that we've set up with the new safety protocols and procedures in place. We have several parents on our school committee, as well as Madora Champagne, representing both parents and the school committee. Our parent group has worked hard on communication plans and guidelines for information going out to the public. They've also spent a lot of time reviewing and considering feedback from parent surveys. Over the summer, we've sent out four different parent surveys. We've had over 900 people respond to those surveys and thousands and thousands of very helpful comments and feedback that have been provided. We've looked closely at all of that data and considered that in developing our district plans. We also have a strong medical team that has been part of our reopening efforts. Our school nurses, Anne Hurley, Jackie McBealie, Barbara Di Giacomo, have served on the reopening committee, and we have also been working with the Norfolk Public Health Nurse, Alyssa Kaiser. They spent a lot of time looking at safety and health protocols and making recommendations for how we would respond to cases of COVID, what preventative measures will be putting in place in both the buildings and in the classrooms, and working on guidelines and guidance for parents. We've also had our facilities team, Matt Haffner, Director of Facilities, and Matt Melnerich, the Deputy Director, working with our building administrators, looking at building operating systems, UCHVAC, changes and modifications we need to make to classrooms and to furniture and to district spaces. And they put a lot of time into that as well. Also, our administrators have spent countless hours this summer really working on developing these plans, looking at how we will operationalize them in each of the buildings and leading the reopening efforts and groups. Lastly, I do want to thank Tom Kavanaugh and the NTA membership for their collaboration, their time, and their willingness to work together on this project. As all of you on the call know, it's been very complex in terms of the planning, and they have been very strong partners, spent a lot of time, asked insightful questions to help us refine and better define our plans, and put in a lot of time as well. So thank you to our association. And also to all of the parents and staff members who took time to respond to surveys. As I said, we've sent out four different surveys to parents over the summer, as well as four to staff. We've had over 900 responses to most of our parent surveys and well over 100 responses to each of the staff surveys. So thank you for those who took the time to add comments and provide feedback. It's been very helpful as far as our planning. I'd like to start just by sharing, all of our plans are informed by what we currently know about the COVID-19 virus, about its symptoms, and about transmission rates. So I want to just review what we know. This is review for most people. Embedded within our presentation tonight, there are a lot of hyperlinks that link to additional information and sources. This presentation will be posted to the district website after our presentation tonight. So if anybody wants to go into individual slides and click on things for additional information, please feel free to do so. So starting with what is COVID-19, obviously, COVID-19 is primarily a respiratory disease that's caused by the SARS-CoV-2 coronavirus. As no individuals infected with COVID-19 can display a range of different symptoms, some people can become seriously ill as a result of contracting the virus, others show mild to no symptoms. Symptoms of COVID-19 include fever, cough, muscle aches, fatigue, shortness of breath, headaches, sore throat, congestion, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, and loss of taste or smell. Symptoms typically appear between two and 12 days after exposure. We do know at this time that older adults and those with underlying medical conditions are at higher risk for contracting COVID-19 and for experiencing more significant symptoms. Again, if you want additional information, you can click on the link to the CDC Center for Disease Control or the mass.gov website to get regular COVID-19 updates about the virus, as well as its spread in Massachusetts. We do know there are three primary ways that COVID-19 is spread. The first is through close contract transmission. When an infected person exhales, sneezes, coughs, respiratory droplets can spread from one individual to another. We do know that wearing masks and maintaining appropriate social distancing minimizes this risk. There is a long-range transmission that can occur if an infected person exhales, sneezes, coughs, or speaks. Aerosolized particles can be released that remain in the air for over an hour. We know that increasing ventilation, bringing in more outside air, and making sure that air filtration systems are well maintained and up to date, that can significantly reduce that risk as well. The third way COVID-19 can spread is through touching a contaminated surface. So if an infected person coughs, sneezes, breathes on a surface, or touches the surface without properly washing their hands, the surface can become contaminated. We know the virus lives on different types of surfaces for varying amounts of time. Limiting sharing materials in school settings and increasing the frequency of cleaning and sanitizing can help us mitigate some of the risks for that. We do also know that COVID-19, from the current research and medical data, does present differently in children than it does in adults. It appears to be less severe in children who are under 10 than it would be among teenagers and adults. And we also know most children who contract COVID-19 develop mild symptoms or can be asymptomatic. Current research is also suggesting that younger children are less likely to transmit the virus to other children or to adults. There's a series of medical studies cited at the bottom that you can refer to if you want additional information on that. So in considering how things burst, we considered what we know about the virus and how to best prevent and protect the community, children, students, and adults in the environment. The second thing that we looked at was, the research has come out since the school closure on the impact of school closures on students. We think that it's really important to take a balanced view of risk in making reopening decisions and considering health risks, as well as social, emotional, and mental health risks that do result from school closures. This slide is from the Parabola Report that was conducted by the Ariadne Lab Group, as well as the Learning Accelerator consultants, who reviewed hundreds of studies, both nationally and internationally, and taken a look at what risk and what the impact of school closures can be for students that are not able to attend in-person learning. The first is fairly not surprising. We know that students, when they're engaged in remote learning, do struggle with remaining focused, engaged on learning tasks. We know that that is not as effective as live in-person instruction. And we also know that for younger students that are remote learning, they require more support from adults in the environment in order to access instruction. So a lot of time from parents who have to serve as a child's teacher at home. We do expect that many students will return to school in September with a loss of learning, loss of math and reading skills that will need to be assessed and remediated when they return to school. We also think it's important that the public know, based on US survey data that was conducted over the spring, over 30% of parents, or 29% of parents, said that their students' emotional and mental health suffered as a result of the school closure. We know that many students were feeling socially isolated, concerned for their safety and the safety of their families. We also know that 13% of the adolescents that we serve through public schools receive some sort of mental health counseling or support. And of those students, 35% receive all of their mental health and emotional health services through schools, so not through outside counselors. Food insecurity is a significant issue when schools close. Over the summer months, we partnered with Plainville, Retham, and King Philip, and we have been providing meals to families in need. We've been distributing over 45 meals a day throughout the summer months. So we do know that many of our children, during the closure from March to June, we also did grab-and-go lunches in partnership, and we gave out quite a few meals to families that do rely on food for nutritional and food security. We do also know that there are many students in our school system and across the country who may have significant speech and language learning needs or may have diagnosis on the autism spectrum, and that those children require very intensive and frequent regular programming in order to maintain their skills and to make academic progress. And a school closure can result in a lack of important academic services and essential services to certain populations of students. Again, this survey data from the US does suggest that when the schools were closed over the spring period, instances of anxiety, depression, substance abuse, social isolation, and behavioral health needs among children grew dramatically. Again, some children experienced academic regression and loss of learning. So in considering and making a decision about whether or not schools should reopen, we are looking first at the medical risks and health and safety needs of students and staff, but also the risks of increasing isolation or prolonged periods where students are not in person and do not have direct access to peers and teachers. where students are not in person and do not have direct access to peers and teachers. Due to the negative impact of school closure on children, there is currently widespread support among the medical community for reopening schools safely and providing some form of in-person learning opportunities for students. You can check the recent guidance from the American Academy of Pediatrics. The Harvard Chan School of Public Health published a fairly comprehensive sixty-five-page report on safe schools. That also is a good source of data. You can look at the Mass Department of Education's initial guidance or again, the Parabola Project. Currently infectious disease specialists are suggesting that it's appropriate to consider reopening schools with additional safety measures in place when community transmission rates are low. That's the general guideline is schools can consider reopening if community transmission rates are below five percent. While we have a slight increase in the last week of cases in Massachusetts, current transmission rates in Massachusetts are two point two percent, and they are lower in the community of Norfolk. Again, benefits of reopening schools. We know a lot about in-person learning. We do know that students learn more effectively when they're physically present in the classroom and have opportunities to interact with their teachers. We also know that it's easier for students with special educational needs to access the full range of programming and services they need in school. Services can be provided remotely, but we do know for certain populations of students, they are more effective when they're delivered live in person. We know students have the opportunity to connect with staff members and peers at school, and that diminishes social isolation. And again, students rely on schools for food, counseling, and mental health support. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we know many students are going to be returning to school with academic achievement gaps. And it is easier to assess student learning and provide immediate differentiated instruction to address learning gaps when students are present and interacting directly live with their teachers. In July, about mid-July, we sent out a parent survey. As I mentioned, we had about nine hundred and twenty-three responses to that survey. And at that time, about ninety-six percent of our parents were interested in having students return to in-person learning in the fall. I have heard from several parents since that time that are reconsidering that decision based on family circumstances or based on new data in Massachusetts. But the abundance of parents, or the majority of our parents, are interested in pursuing in-person learning. We sent a similar survey out to staff mid-July. Again, a hundred and fifteen responses to that, and at that time, over seventy-five percent of our staff were comfortable and interested in returning to school to provide in-person live instruction to students with the additional safety protocols and distancing in place. So for any in-person learning situation that we consider at this time, whether it's a full return or a hybrid return to school, we have comprehensive health and safety protocols that we needed to consider and develop. Again, our medical team has been working on that, considering the feedback from the Parabola Project, from the Department of Education, from the Harvard Safe Buildings Report, as well as in consult with our public health nurse for the community of Norfolk. So the first thing that we will be doing in any in-person situation is comprehensive staff and student screening. All staff members will be required to complete a daily COVID screening and self-certify that they are safe to return to work daily prior to coming into the building. We will be asking all parents and guardians also to screen students daily before you send them to school. There's a hyperlink there that if you want to take a look at later. There's a series of questions that we're asking parents to review and make sure that students do not present with any symptoms of COVID, do not have a fever or have not had a fever over a hundred point four, and also have not come into contact with anybody who has been recently diagnosed with COVID positive. All of our substitutes that come in for day-to-day subbing will check in with the school nurse upon arrival, and they will be required to complete a COVID screening before they are allowed to report to the classroom. We will not be allowing visitors to the building during the school day with the exception of emergency technicians if we have to bring somebody in for plumbing repair or something like that. And all contracted workers will also be screened by the school nurse before being given entrance to the building. In-person learning, safety, and health protocols. So all of our students and staff members will be required to wear masks in the school building and on buses. As a parent mentioned earlier on the call, we will be recommending that the school committee vote to require all children to wear masks at all grade levels. Social distancing requirements will be enforced in the building. We have protocols in place for increased hand washing and cleaning. We are also looking to increase a custodial staff member at each building during the day to increase the frequent cleaning of restrooms, common spaces, and high-touch surfaces. We have signs that will be posted throughout the building marking traffic patterns in the hallway to eliminate risk of close contact when students are passing in the hallways. Also, proper procedures for mask-wearing and for appropriate proper hand washing. We have plexiglass dividers that we have installed in office spaces and in instructional spaces to allow teachers to meet safely with two to three students at a time with a plexiglass shield between. We also have identified isolation spaces in both buildings. They are near the nurse's office, and that's where students who or staff members who become ill will be isolated until they can be dismissed from work or from school. We have comprehensive protocols established for responding to a student or staff member who tests positive for COVID. All of these guidelines will be published and the report will be releasing to the public on Monday, the tenth of August. If you want to read those protocols, I'm happy to answer questions about them later. We are also dividing students into cohorts and limiting interaction between cohorts, both in a full in-person return or in a hybrid model. Students, if we were in a full in-person return, we will be keeping classrooms, two to three classrooms together and restricted for lunchtime, outside time, any time that they may be interacting between those students. So we will be limiting students to cohorts and again, limiting interaction between students throughout the building. We are also be limiting movement throughout the building. We will be having our teachers travel to students instead of having students leave the classroom to go to the gym, art room, or any other space. Again, as I mentioned earlier, restricting sharing of materials between students, staggering arrival and dismissal times and monitoring them to ensure students maintain social distancing. We have put protocols in place for classroom teachers to manage minor health issues in the classroom. The nurses will triage any students that present as sick or not feeling well through phone screenings. And mask breaks will be scheduled at regular intervals for all students throughout the day. Responding to positive cases of COVID, again, if a student or staff member becomes ill at school, they will be screened first by the nurse. Anyone presenting the symptoms of COVID nineteen will be moved to an isolation space and then will need to be dismissed from school immediately. All areas that that student or staff member has visited will be immediately cleaned and disinfected and will remain closed for a minimum of twelve hours. Students and staff members will need to be tested for COVID nineteen and follow all DPH requirements for self-quarantining. Our school nurses will work with the public health nurse and will complete contact tracing and identify people who are close contacts. And a close contact is identified or defined by the Department of Public Health as anyone who has been within six feet for an extended period of time over fifteen minutes of the COVID-positive person. Students who are determined to have been close contacts will be advised to get tested and won't need to remain home while they await their test results. And they will also need to be picked up from school. If they have been potentially exposed, they will not be allowed to ride buses home. Students whose tests show negative and have no symptoms can return to school immediately. And any individual who is not tested has to self-quarantine for the full fourteen days and cannot come back to school if they present with any symptoms. School closures. If we have a positive case of COVID nineteen in the school, we'll work with the public health nurse to determine whether or not the building or a section of the building needs to be closed for deep cleaning. If school closure is necessary, all of our teachers and students will immediately transition to remote learning so that learning and academic instruction is not interrupted in the case of a school closure. If we had more than one case of COVID nineteen in the school, or if we had a series of cases within a short period of time, then we would work with the public health nurse, the local board of health, and our school medical team to determine if there's potential school-based transmission and if schools need to be closed for a brief deep cleaning period or for a full possible fourteen-day quarantine period. That call will be made again in consult with the public health nurse as our school medical team and the Norfolk Board of Health. So this just gives you a picture of what social distancing would look like in the classrooms. These are photos from the H Olive Day School. The first photo on the left shows what a classroom would look like with three feet of social distancing. You can see in that instance, we are able to fit with no other furniture in the classroom about twenty desks in a given classroom space with very limited space for teachers or other adults to move around the classroom. On the right, you see what a classroom looks like with six feet of social distancing. In that instance, we are able to fit about twelve desks in the classroom and allow appropriate six feet of social distancing space for the teacher in the front of the classroom to work and present instruction and to work with students. The second set of photos is from the Freeman Kennedy. Again, on the left, you see three feet of social distancing. We can fit about eighteen desks in Freeman Kennedy classrooms, twenty in some classrooms. We have some oddly shaped classrooms that are six-sided in different areas of the buildings. Those can fit sixteen or seventeen desks. On the right, you see what it looks like with six feet of social distancing, and we can fit about twelve desks in each classroom with those conditions. This gives you just a quick snapshot of what the offices look like. We have installed plexiglass, as I mentioned earlier, so that our secretarial staff who is working throughout the summer and has some limited interactions with the public who may be coming in to register a student or accepting deliveries of materials and supplies. That plexiglass shield gives an additional barrier for our secretarial staff from the public, although we are requiring anybody entering the building to wear masks, and they are not allowed access to the building beyond the office space. On the right side, you see what an isolation area will look like. We are still in the process of, we're waiting, we've ordered two cots for each of our isolation spaces as well as some additional medical material. We are waiting for that to arrive. It should be in shortly. So this is not the actual isolation area, but that's a snapshot of what it will look like. Transportation. So for transportation, we will be enforcing all of the safety protocols I discussed for any in-person learning. The new guidelines from the Department of Education have come out for transportation, and we are going to be restricted to about twenty-one to twenty-three students per bus. The buses typically carry up to seventy-two passengers. Students will be required to wear masks while they're on the bus, and it will be of one student per seat with alternating students being on the outside or inside rows. And we will be asking the drivers to keep windows remaining open at all times during transportation as long as that is possible. Students will have an assigned seat on the bus. They will ride the same bus daily and sit in the same spot. And we will also put in place routine cleaning and sanitization of vehicles between runs. So they're cleaned between any time students will be getting on or off the bus. As I mentioned earlier, what we have seen consistently in the medical research literature is that wearing masks is an effective strategy for helping to reduce the spread of COVID nineteen. The CDC suggests that students over two should be wearing masks. And the Harvard School of Public Health and the Parabola Project support that, that all students of all ages should be wearing masks. I did have a conversation earlier today with Aunt Proto, who has been running summer programs all summer, and she has said that she has had no challenges or issues with students in the younger programs being able to wear and maintain wearing their masks. This is just a slideshow or a slide of a study that was done in Springfield, Missouri. And it was, many people probably read about it, where two hairstylists who tested positive for COVID nineteen and had seen over a hundred and thirty-nine clients in the salon. The contact tracing that was done, that through the Board of Public Health checked in, all people were wearing masks while they were in the salon, and at that time, none of the a hundred and thirty-nine clients tested positive. So it's very clear that wearing masks is effective in reducing the spread of COVID nineteen. Okay, so we have plans for three different reopening scenarios. As I mentioned earlier, the Massachusetts Department of Ed is requiring all districts to submit all three plans because there is a strong potential that districts may have to pivot from one learning scenario to the next based on changes in research or based on changes in the data. So we have three reopening scenarios. The first plan we worked on was the potential for a full return to in-person learning where all students would come back to school with additional safety measures in place. We spent a great deal of time and effort on working on this plan. It was our goal and continues to be our goal to get as many students back for as much learning time as possible. So our preliminary goal was to try to bring back all students to typical instruction. We know that students are craving being back in school. We know our teachers are anxious to be working directly with students again. We also know, again, that all families are craving some sort of normalcy in a really unprecedented situation. In order for us to accommodate a full return to learning, we can only do that if we apply the minimum standard from the Department of Education of three feet of social distancing in classrooms. The Massachusetts Initial Reopening Guidance allows for districts to implement three feet of social distancing, but encourages districts to strive for six feet between students. The Center for Disease Control, the Harvard School of Public Health, again, in that Schools for Health Report, the link is there if you want to check it later. And Ariadi Labs and the Massachusetts Teachers Association, based on advice from their medical team, are all advocating for six feet of social distancing in any academic setting. We initially had been advised that the Centers for Disease Control, when they reissued their school reopening guidance, might consider reducing their initial direction from six feet to a shorter distance, as well as shortening the quarantine period. For anybody who has reviewed the new guidelines from CDC, they did go forward with shortening the quarantine from fourteen to ten days based on new research and data. However, they've maintained the recommendation of six feet for social distancing. The new guidance does indicate that if students are, if there's less than six feet of space between students, they should be wearing masks. But the CDC does not endorse three feet as an appropriate guide anywhere in any guidance that they provide. In order to meet social distancing requirements on the bus, we would have to double our transportation runs. We can only fit, again, twenty-one to twenty-three students on buses that typically carry seventy-two or seventy-three students. We did a survey early in the summer to see how many parents would be interested in accessing transportation. About a third of our parents indicated they choose to drive students. So if two-thirds of our students driving the bus, we will need to double bus runs. We do recognize that we could resurvey parents and see if they would choose to drive their students or could support the district in driving students. However, if we have a large number of parents driving to school, we would also have to stagger arrival and dismissal because we have to protect the district and we have to ensure that we don't have traffic backing up onto Main Street or to Rockwood Road. So in order to accommodate a large number of parents driving, we would also have to stagger arrival and dismissal times. In a full in-person learning, the Department of Ed and all medical teams require that students be thinking six feet of distancing anytime they would not be wearing masks. So that would be lunch, snack, or during mask breaks. In order to meet those safety requirements for lunch periods, we would have to spread lunch over approximately three to four hours. We would have to divide classes so we can only accommodate about half of the class eating in the classroom at a given time. We have grade levels that have a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty students in them. So if we had seventy-five students eating in class, we would have to find an alternate location for the remaining students. With the social distancing requirements and the guidelines that we have from the Department of Education, both our Freeman Kennedy cafeteria and the cafeteria at the H Olive Day can only accommodate thirty-eight students. Then we would have to use the cafeteria space as well as all other available overflow to accommodate the number of students for lunch. So that would be the band room, chorus room, libraries, music or art room in the H Olive Day. We would also have to have twenty minutes to clean and sanitize those spaces before a new group of students comes in, which would drive our lunch period to be approximately between three and four hours. That being said, it would also leave us with no space to accommodate snack and mask breaks. So all snack and mask breaks would have to be held outside as our overflow spaces would be being used for lunch for the vast majority of the school day. We would, in this model, have to add an additional classroom at fifth and sixth grade because we can, in the three feet of distancing, only accommodate twenty students, and we have more than twenty students in classes at those grade levels. So we would have to add two additional classrooms. All of our special subject instruction, music, band, chorus, and physical education would have to be outside and may be limited in inclement weather due to space. Again, accommodating those mask and movement breaks would be very challenging with outdoor spaces, even if we consider potential tented areas, which we are actively investigating. We can only accommodate in outside spaces a limited number of students with a six-foot requirement. A hybrid model for learning. Oh, I also should say, in the full return to learning, we did send out a survey to all of our staff members earlier this week to see how comfortable people felt coming back to work. Over seventy percent of our staff members feel that we would need to implement a minimum of six feet of social distancing in order for them to feel safe coming back to teaching. In a hybrid model of instruction, the district is able to implement six feet of social distancing in all classrooms. Students in this model would split their learning time between in-person learning in school and learning at home. All students would attend school for two full days and would learn remotely the remaining three days of the week. Wednesdays would be a remote learning day for all students. for all students and all of our buildings would be thoroughly cleaned and sanitized between cohorts of students. Teachers within this model would be hosting virtual class meetings live every day for students so that students that are learning from home can log in and can keep and promote interaction between both cohorts in the classroom and the students learning at home. The remote learning days would involve both a live class meeting in the morning and then work, project-based assignments that teachers are giving to students when they're in school, as well as pre-recorded lessons and opportunities to collaborate with other students. All of our specials in this model, art, music, wellness, and bands, would be delivered during the remote learning days. So we would be maximizing direct instruction and content instruction when students are live in person in school and all of the special subject and enrichment opportunities would be provided on the remote learning days. Any students receiving special education and English language learning services would receive their full range of services in person and remotely. As I mentioned earlier, there are certain students that are considered to be high needs students and as defined by the Department of Education, some of those students may be eligible to attend school daily or to receive more of their services in person, as well as our Level One English Language Learners. Students who also require additional support and reteaching may have received developmental reading or math instruction could receive those services in small groups during remote learning days. Based on the feedback that we receive from parents as well as staff, the structure of the hybrid learning, the majority of parents preferred students coming full based and a couple of days a week versus a full week and a week off. So we would be moving forward with a split week model. All students would be assigned to a cohort, either Cohort A or Cohort B. We will be notifying students of their teacher and their cohort assignments the week of August 24th. And students would attend school according to the schedule below. So Cohort A would come to school for live in-person learning on Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday would be a remote learning and a cleaning and sanitizing day for all. And then Thursday and Friday would be Cohort B, reporting to school for live instruction. We're recommending a slightly different model for our kindergarten students. And again, that's based on the developmental needs of our kindergarten as well as a strong preference, over 70% of parents preferring this model for the younger students. Again, because of social distancing requirements, we have students sitting at desks in the classroom. We do feel for five-year-old students attending school and remaining at a desk, even though we'll provide developmentally appropriate instruction, we will provide movement and mask breaks. Six hours is a very long day for five-year-olds. So we are recommending for kindergarten that we go with a half-day model. Cohort A would come four mornings a week instead of two full days. So come four half-days. They would come in the morning. Wednesday would be remote for all. And the second cohort would come in the afternoons, Monday through Friday, with remote learning and instruction on Wednesdays. All of kindergarten students' special subjects, art, music, physical education, would be delivered during the remote portion of their day, whereas the direct content instruction would happen during their in-person learning time. Oh, I should say also with kindergarten, we would be adding a midday bus run transportation. Students would be picked up and drop off from their home to school. The third plan that we were required to develop is a fully remote learning plan. This is not a plan that we are recommending at this time, although if there's a spike in cases in Massachusetts, if data changes or if any contact during the year we have an outbreak, we may have to revert to a fully remote learning plan. In order to support that and based on the fairly comprehensive and lengthy feedback we receive from parents at our spring, at the end of our spring session, we know many people and many families struggled with technology glitches, with trouble accessing websites and videos. A lot of that was due to people using personal equipment that had different operating systems or different updates. So in order to support more robust remote learning, we will be providing all students with district-owned devices. Students will bring their devices back and forth to school on live instruction days. We will be implementing a universal platform for grades kindergarten, one through six. We'll be using Google Classroom and we'll provide training for parents so that you can understand how the Google platform works and you can better monitor students' assignments and whether they've submitted work. At kindergarten, we're going to be using a program called CSOM. And again, we'll provide training and support for parents. That seems to be a better developmental fit for managing remote instruction at that age level. It will be significantly more robust than it was during the emergency closure last spring with more direct teaching provided. We will be incorporating social studies and science content into the remote learning platform. It will be a blend of synchronous and asynchronous, so live or pre-recorded lessons. Children will be provided opportunities to work collaboratively on project-based assignments and they will receive regular feedback and be graded on their submission of work. Again, we'll be incorporating all social, emotional learning and instruction into the remote learning plan. Students receiving, again, special education or EL support will receive their full range of services and may be able to access, unless there is a stay-at-home order issued by the governor's office, some services for special populations may continue to be provided live. Students, again, can access developmental reading or math instruction remotely in small groups. And again, all special subject instruction would be provided in a remote format on a weekly basis. The primary difference between the spring and now is, again, we are incorporating all content areas into our remote learning platform. Students will be graded. It will not be pass/fail. And the time on learning requirements will be increased. So where they were expected to engage in remote learning for up to three hours or three and a half hours a day in the spring, it will be the full five hours of academic content at this time. So options for parents. If the school committee votes tonight for an in-person learning platform, we do recognize, based on parent surveys, that there are many parents and guardians who do not feel comfortable having their child return to live in-person learning at this time. So we will provide an option for remote learning. Parents actually have two options. They can choose to homeschool their child. If parents are interested in homeschooling, on our website, under the Parents tab on our main page, there is a homeschooling application. There are state requirements that parents would need to comply with in proposing their homeschool program and that application would have to be submitted to our central office for me to review prior to the start of school. If parents do not want to homeschool but are interested in a remote learning platform, we will also sponsor a remote learning program for those that are not able to attend live instruction. I spoke at an earlier meeting about the state is procuring a learning management system that will be available to districts. We just received information about that earlier this morning. So we're reviewing what is available through the state, but we do intend to supplement the state program with additional learning opportunities from the district. We will have teachers who are managing the remote learning platform, providing feedback to students who choose to remain remote. And we will seek opportunities to try to keep students connected with other classmates and peers. So our recommendation, based on all of the data that we have looked at at this time, would be that we begin the school year in a hybrid learning model. Again, the first day of school, based on the calendar vote this morning, or earlier in the meeting, would be September 14th for students. And we would recommend that we reevaluate all of our district plans in six to eight weeks based on any new research that comes out or changes in state data. Our goal, again, is to try to get more students back for more learning time as soon as we feel that we can do that in a way that is safe. Timelines for decisions. So the school committee will be voting on a model tonight. Once we complete that vote, we will be sharing a comprehensive version of all of our plans with the public on August 10th. That will detail all of our safety procedures and protocols, the facilities plans. There's more information in that report about HVAC systems that people probably ever want to have. But it will all be included in the report released to the public August 10th. We will give parents a week to review and consider our district plans. And then we'll be sending a survey on August 11th, so the day after the report comes out. But we are not expecting parents to return that for a week. So we'll be looking for parents to make their final decisions by Monday, August 17th. That will be confirming whether or not their child's returning to school or choosing a remote learning option and whether or not they'll be accessing transportation. We are asking parents to make a decision that will be binding as far as transportation goes for the first eight weeks of school because we need to make sure that we can establish bus routes and do that in a timely way. And changes to those bus routes impact times for start and pickup. So it's challenging to shift those routes, you know, frequently. So we're going to ask people to make a decision that would hold for the first eight weeks of school. Again, I think it's critical that we remember the importance of education and that our primary goal is to make sure we're providing robust learning opportunities, but also meeting the social and emotional needs of our children and that we are providing a plan that is safe for both students and teachers and that can help provide some degree of normalcy for students during a difficult time. And at this point, I am happy to take questions from the public. So I'm going to unshare this screen so I can see your question.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and kind of go through these in grid. I know many things you've already gone over, but nonetheless, I think it's good to maybe reiterate the points just in case. So if everyone can just mute for the moment and then continue to mute for the moment and we'll go through what's on the chat board right now and then we'll take any additional things that come up after this, if that makes sense.
Yep.
All right, let me see. There was a question regarding consultation basically with local hospitals, emergency daycares, asking about their policies and finding out what has worked and what has not. Was that part of the discussion process for the reopening committee?
Hold on, Thomas. I'm trying to find the question in chat so I can...
It's literally that. Yeah, had the committee called local hospitals, emergency daycares and ask about their policies and what has worked and not worked.
We haven't called local hospitals, but we have reviewed extensive medical reports. And a lot of that data is regarding what's worked in other countries that have opened and reopened schools based on data from the state in terms of initial reopening of childcare. So we have looked at those published reports from multiple sources, but we have not called local hospitals.
Okay. There's a few questions that popped up. I'm going to paraphrase these. They roughly have to do with the HVAC AC system. I know HOD does not have one. But there is a good question from a number of folks here regarding what changes are being made to monitor the air quality in the school buildings. As noted, HOD does not have that. Freeman has sort of the condensed or conditioned air approach. And then there was also a question in here regarding the quarantine area in the event that someone is being checked, whether or not that has a separate ventilation system.
Great, so I can answer all of those questions. So we have, and it will come out in the published report so people can read the details, but we do have a full-time HVAC maintenance person that works for the town and schools. It's a shared position. All of the HVAC units of both the Freeman Kennedy and at the HRD, we follow a regular preventative maintenance plan for those. Filters are changed regularly. We have adjusted settings for air quality in both buildings so that we're bringing in 50% fresh air from outside currently. The minimum standard for health settings is 10% to 20%. So we've increased the outdoor airflow. We've also had our public health nurse review guidance on fans. So we will be using wall-mounted fans to increase the circulation of air from the classroom into the intake vents at the HL of Day. So it won't be recirculating air among the classroom, but it will help with airflow out at the classroom and through the intake vents. So we've had consult with public health nurse on that. We also expect teachers to be able to leave windows open whenever possible. In the guidelines, you will see that HL of Day, because it is not air-conditioned and wall-mounted air-conditioning units are not recommended at this time. We do have a heat index guideline. If it is based on heat and humidity, if it is determined that it is unsafe for students to come into the building and wear masks, we will call a heat closure day and students will learn remotely, um, on those days. So we are in really good shape as far as our HVAC systems in both buildings, um, and as well as, as far as air quality and air filtration, um, maintenance. So that has all been addressed.
And then the follow-up, I think, was just whether or not the, the isolation room, we'll call it, whether or not that had its own separate ventilation. I don't believe it does.
Well, what we've looked out for the isolation room is that we can, before they're used, if we have to bring us childs down to the isolation room, we can close those vents and shut them off from the system, so air is not recirculated from the isolation rooms into the system. So we, we have a plan in place for that. Um, and we can open windows and sanitize that space before we re-allow, um, that, we can basically shut off the HVAC to those spaces, um, to prevent re-exposure.
And then tying in with that, there was a question regarding, and I'm sure this will be on a number of people's mind, just, and you touched upon this, but the, the specifics about the cleaning and disinfecting protocols, what we intend to be doing both on a daily basis on Wednesday, you know, that whole process.
So we have hospital-quality electrostatic spraying machines. We are using all products that are approved by the FDA with a kill factor for COVID-19. We will be spraying all rooms every night. And with the two custodians that we have on the day, they will be, um, cleaning high-contact, high-touch surfaces throughout the day. Um, multiple cleanings of bathroom spaces that are shared spaces throughout the day. Uh, if we have to access spaces for lunch or breaks, again, those will be cleaned and sanitized between cohorts of groups. In the report that I will be sharing out with the public, you can click, click on the link, um, to see all of the products that are approved by the FDA for use for COVID-19. We will also be, every morning after we've sprayed classrooms in the morning, that all surfaces will be re-cleaned with food-safe wipes, um, to ensure that they, that if students are eating off their desks, there's no chemical products remaining, um, after they have been cleaned and sanitized. Um, so that is all included in the report. Um, but we are using all FDA-approved products that have a kill rating for COVID-19. Um, we will be doing a deeper cleaning on Wednesdays of all spaces, uh, as well as, um, you know, desks, bathrooms, faucets, everything like that. So we will be doing a complete, comprehensive deep cleaning and electrostatic spraying of all spaces on Wednesday, um, in order to ensure that we are not cross-contaminating between cohorts of students.
Okay, um, couple of teacher-specific questions, uh, I see. Do we feel we have enough substitutes for the upcoming year since possibility of more teachers needing more days off? Uh, and then also just about their ability to manage their, what would be an extra workload, uh, as well as ensuring that they get their required breaks and lunch and everything else.
Good question. So yes, we have arranged and are working on finalizing coverage so that we can meet contractual obligations for the duty-free lunch for all teachers and ensuring that all of the prep times are covered. Um, we are also, um, what was the other question about that? Oh, substitutes. So we have reduced our budget line for day-to-day substitutes. And we are, we have advertised and are looking to hire two more permanent building substitutes. So we will have the two available in each building to rotate and cover classrooms, um, because we are expecting that the sub pool may be diminished. Um, we also, in emergency situations, can relocate and reallocate staffing to cover classrooms. So we are working on an aggressive plan for, for both of that. But we are looking to increase our permanent substitute that would be available to cover emergency needs in both buildings.
Okay, um, couple of questions on masks, specifically what type of mask? Um, I know there are some of the children like to wear the gaiters, for instance, and that has been deemed not as safe as some of the other masks that are in use. Um, is there going to be a specific mask that's going to be required to students? And then if you could go over the mask break policy?
Yep, so, um, masks, the current recommendation is cloth masks or surgical masks for students. We, um, will be sending out guidelines for parents with specific details. We are waiting for final guidance from DESI on that. Uh, we are also waiting for final guidance from DESI on the frequency of mask breaks. Preliminary guidance is no, um, at least every four hours. We expect that we will be providing breaks more frequently than that, because students will have breaks for recess, for snack time, for lunchtime, and probably a scheduled mask break in the afternoon. Um, so we will probably exceed the required breaks, um, from, from, uh, the, the health and safety guidelines. So more information to come on the types of masks. We also do have, we've ordered over 5,000, um, child, student, um, surgical masks so that we have them available for any child that does not have a mask. All of our bus drivers will have supplies of masks to distribute if a child, um, if a mask breaks or if they need to, um, a replacement mask.
Okay, um, semi-related is, a question came up, uh, as far as children that are on I E Ps, um, would they be in attendance the same number of days a week as students without, uh, sort of, that are not on I E Ps? And is there some sort of prioritization for students in need of extra supports?
There is. Um, our special education director will be hosting a question and answer session for parents, um, who, whose students receive services through the special education department, so she can provide more detailed information during that, that session. Uh, but the state has issued some guidelines for student, for how they're defining students that would be considered high-needs students that require, um, daily in-person instruction when it is available. So some of our students, based on that criteria, will be eligible to come to student, to school on a daily basis. They may not be integrated with both cohorts. That's going to depend on their individual I E Ps. Um, and, um, information about that will come. Um, again, students that are not considered high-needs would be assigned to a cohort. They would receive some direct teaching while they're in person, uh, per their I E P, and then would receive some services remotely during the days they're learning remotely at home.
And then on a related, uh, as far as, and maybe this is going to also be addressed down the road, the policy plan for children that are not able to tolerate masks due to disability, disabilities or special needs?
Yes, if a student is not able to wear a mask due to medical needs, um, then the staff members that are working with that child will be provided with additional personal protective gear, face shields, disposable gowns, eyewear. Uh, we have been implementing services all summer and have, had students in the buildings learning on-site and have trialed some of those protocols. So we know that there are some children that cannot wear a mask in those situations. They will be, um, not, uh, in close contact with any other child in the program. We will maintain appropriate distancing. And staff members working with those students would be using additional personal protective gear.
Okay, and just to clarify, and again, just for, just everyone's edification as I'm going through this, I'm reading through the chat and then giving a chance for Ingrid to respond to these questions. Many of these, she's already gone over, but just there are questions out there. Many more people probably have these same questions, so please be patient. Um, a question came up, if it'd be possible to transition to in-person learning, to whatever form that may look like, in the middle of the year, if a family chooses to start remotely due to health concerns?
Yes, we are, we are public education and will provide access to instruction. Um, if students' family situation changes or, or health situation changes and they choose to go from remote to in-person, they will be assigned to a class and brought into school.
Okay, um, and can you walk us through the specific process of how it's going to work with teaching online and then teaching remotely? I think there is some, there seems to be a number of questions about that, just general confusion of how the, the process itself is going to play out.
I'm sorry, can you, I, I lost sound for a minute there. Can you repeat that?
Walk us through the specific process of, we've got two days a week remote, and then the other two days, everybody stays home on Wednesday. Just on a given week, what it's going to look like for all the students so that parents get a good snapshot of what they can expect during that, every week?
Yep, so again, every class in, in a hybrid learning situation, the morning will start with a live class meeting. So students in school will be logging into the meeting, even though they're in person, so that students at home can join. So there will be a live class meeting for all students daily to keep the two cohorts connected and to address some of our social, emotional learning, um, and, and needs. Um, after that time, students that are in school, again, we are moving all special subject instruction to the remote days. So students that are in school on those two in-person days will have, um, a, a solid, full five-hour day of direct instruction that will address reading, math, social studies, science. Um, primarily, we're expecting that new content will be, uh, or complex concepts will be introduced on live in-person days. Um, practice and re-teaching will happen on days that students are learning remotely. Uh, there will be, on days that they're learning remotely, after the live class meeting, students will have assignments from their teachers to work on, writing assignments, projects that they're, they're working on with other students in collaboration. They will have some pre-recorded lessons that they will need to watch. Probably primarily, social studies and science lessons will be delivered in pre-recorded format. Um, they will have to turn in assignments that they will be, the teacher will be reviewing and grading, um, and providing feedback on. Um, and then they will have their special subject instruction during that day. So either an art class and music class, um, uh, physical education class during those remote days.
Okay, um, a question came up regarding siblings. So say if, uh, two siblings attend H O D, would they automatically be in cohort one versus cohort two? How would that work?
Yes, based on feedback from parents, we are going to ensure that students and siblings, um, are, are placed in the same cohort. So students from the same family will attend in-person learning, uh, on the same days each week. I do want to, I did want to add, um, I didn't share in the presentation, but we do recognize, based on parent feedback, that many families are concerned about childcare during the days that their students are learning remotely. Um, our parent, uh, parent members on our district reopening committee have been working really hard to partner with outside organizations to be able to provide options for families. Um, and we want to do that in a way that is as safe as possible. So we've had some success with that. The Norfolk Rec Department has agreed to sponsor supervised remote learning centers. Um, we will be providing the safety training for their staff members that they hire, as well as we will be providing training for, uh, their teachers on how to access our remote learning plat, platform and how to support student learning. So we would provide all the training. They will provide the staffing. There will be a fee, um, and, and Anna Proto is going to try to keep that a reasonable fee for families, uh, but we need to pay for the staff that are, um, running those supervised settings. Um, my understanding from Anna's priority would be first given to any essential employees, frontline workers, um, that are managing the COVID crisis. Um, and then space will be available for other families in need, um, as well. We are working to offer multiple sites for that, and those sites will maintain social distancing. We'll try to limit, uh, again, contact between cohorts. The Norfolk Grange has kindly volunteered that space so that we can run one program there. There is some space at Town Hall, and we're continuing to work with local churches on that. Um, the other thing that we are looking at is the, um, Franklin Y M C A has agreed to offer a supervised remote center. They're waiting for final guidance from the state, uh, because they serve a number of communities and they need to find out, um, what their requirements will be in terms of isolating and keeping cohorts of students separate. Um, the Franklin Y, interestingly, um, we are part of that group. They support our, um, Health and Healthy Schools Initiative. They do not serve Franklin, which is interesting, even though it's located in Franklin. So that would be Norfolk and Bellingham, um, would be communities that would be primarily accessing that. Uh, additionally, the Adirondack Club has offered to run a supervised remote learning center. So, um, we are trying to partner with outside agencies to be able to provide safe learned, supervised learning spaces on days that students are not able to, um, attend school.
Excellent, um, question came up on, uh, the ability to differentiate, it's probably difficult to do, COVID symptoms versus flu and cold symptoms as we approach flu season? Um, what would be the specifics is to deciding if a COVID test is needed? Um, will a COVID test be necessary every time there are symptoms?
So that is, I, our school, we're going to advise parents that they need to keep students home if they're presenting with any of those symptoms. Uh, you're going to work with your local pediatrician, um, to, to make those decisions, um, whether or not a child needs to be tested. Currently, the Mass Department of Public Health guidelines are, if people are presenting with symptoms consistent with COVID, they're recommending testing. Uh, but that would be a decision you'd make with your private medical health provider.
Okay, let me see here. Um, when will SAC information be available? Because that could make a difference as far as whether or not someone has a need for transportation.
When will?
SAC?
Oh, so we are, we're, we're working on that. We have to determine the model first before we can determine the number of students that SAC can safely accommodate before and after school. Um, and that information will be coming out shortly to parents. Once we determine a model and kids are assigned to a cohort, then SAC will be reaching out to parents and working on whether or not they are choosing to continue to access the before and after care.
Okay. Um, is there any sort of plan right now? There's a few questions sort around this thing, uh, as far as how the cohort groups will specifically be decided? What, what, what their makeup of them will be?
Um, well, we, we can accommodate about half the class at a given time in the hybrid model with the social distancing in place. So we will be looking to place students first that receive any kind of special education or E L L services so that we can, uh, make sure that students that receive services together are able to, um, be grouped together, because staff can't be in two places at one time. So we will be assigning students that have unique needs first, and then we will be looking to balance the instructional needs of the classroom from there. Uh, but we will also be trying to make sure that we keep siblings together in the same cohort. So we have some preliminary plans drawn up for that, and we are continuing to work through those.
Okay, um, as one who suffers from seasonal allergies, this is an interesting question. Um, and there are many kids that probably like this that have some form of sniffles essentially, uh, throughout the year. It's no fever, uh, maybe not a cold. What would be the plan for those folks? Because it would, I guess the knee-jerk reaction would be there might be something going on, wherein in fact, it's just seasonal allergies.
So, um, a fever is a, a key trigger to look at, but in the case that a child is symptomatic, if they have routine, regular seasonal allergies that you deal every, with every year, we are going to advise people to check with their primary care physician or medical provider to determine whether or not they feel that child is safe to return to school. They can also, parents can also call our nurses and go through a COVID screening and, and, and discuss that before they make that decision.
Um, a couple of questions have come up regarding recess and how that would work, both remotely and while in person?
So recess, um, when in person, we will, um, the current guidelines do allow limited groups of students to be outside and play in the playing, uh, structures or areas or to access, um, movement breaks outside on the field. We will be, again, as I mentioned earlier, keeping cohorts of students together, so only two to three classes at a time, and the same students will go with the same students every day. Um, we are also looking at, um, providing, uh, potentially shaded areas for teachers to take classes out for mask breaks that will be, will have indicators for social distancing outside, um, that we would be accessing at both buildings as well.
Okay, so I'm just scanning through them, I'm almost.
There is a question about HVAC. We do have, as I mentioned, I think some people may have joined the call late. We do have a full-time HVAC person, certified HVAC, uh, repair person on staff that works for the schools and towns who maintains all of our systems, um, who is also consulting with the Department of Public Health, uh, around, um, fan use and, uh, air quality issues. So we do have expertise in that area.
Couple of questions on here regarding K P's approach, uh, versus our approach, and it, I, and just how that could work. It looks like they may have gone with a slightly different, if I'm understanding this correctly, than what we're proposing, and I, if you could just kind of speak upon that?
Yeah, um, so we have been in communication with K P as well as Rentham and Plainville. At this point, I believe all three, uh, Rentham voted last night on the elementary model, similar to what we're proposing tonight. Uh, we've shared that data with K P. They have some unique considerations at Middleland High School. Um, as you know, at the high school level, students select classes. They're not with the same group of peers in every class. Um, and the way they have things teamed at the middle school, uh, they have some limitations as to how they would structure their hybrid. They know that we are looking at remote only on Wednesdays for cleaning and sanitizing, um, and they were, um, going to try to accommodate that, but we cannot guarantee siblings from the elementary level will be on the same remote schedule as middle and high school students. It's just not possible with the way their courses are structured.
And let's see, and a question came up as far as the, uh, the playground structures. I assume they'll be regularly cleaned and wiped down as well as among, with any surface?
We will be following the, um, public health guidelines for, for play spaces. Currently, that is not a requirement, because the equipment is outside. Uh, the, the guidelines for public parks and, and spaces are that students maintain distancing while using equipment and that they wash their hands before and after going to the playground. So that is what we would be implementing.
All right.
Question about the K classrooms. Um, again, we will be following the same cleaning protocol, uh, between sessions that we would follow, um, on a Wednesday. So we will be, we have two full-time day custodians on at HL of day between sessions, that hour and 15-minute break. All of those classrooms will be electrostatically cleaned, and all high-touch surfaces will be wiped down again with, um, food-safe, um, disinfectant.
And will the parents have any input regarding kindergarten, whether it be A M or P M? Or is that?
Um, no, because we have to do that the way we did, um, when we used to have half-day kindergartens for transportation purposes, that'll have to be by neighborhood. Um, if we are in a hybrid model all year, we will probably survey parents about whether or not, um, to consider a flip partway through the year or not. Um, but we will have to do those assignments by, by neighborhood and for transportation purposes.
And I don't, can you just go over what the, uh, plan would be for preschool? I don't believe.
So we are still working on the plan for preschool. Preschool is a little bit different than all other grade levels, because we have, um, all students that require special educational programming that come to our preschools at the age of three. And then we also have tuition-based spots for typically developing peers. The preschool team is working with our Director of Special Education on those plans, because we need to survey and find out from parents whether or not they are interested in sending their students if we're in a hybrid or a remote learning model. Um, and based on parents' feedback, we will be shaping our model for kindergarten. I expect that it will be similar to kindergarten, where we'll be looking for increased frequency and shorter duration. Um, but we are working on that, and we are in the process of collecting data from parents, um, about their, their plans and interest in, in the pre-K program, given the conditions we're opening with.
Okay, and I, I still think this is, is coming up a little bit. I think if two people, it looks like maybe still questioning about this, so others might. So I, I know you've explained this, so let's just say Child Day goes Monday, Tuesday, and then Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. What is their Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday going to look like specifically?
Okay, so again, it'll be more, a more robust remote learning platform than we had originally, um, because we were responding to a crisis in the spring where we've had more time to plan and organize, uh, for remote learning for the fall. So on the remote learning days, every morning, they will have a class meeting with their whole class, a live class meeting. They will have assignments that they are working on and projects they are working on, uh, that are assigned by the teachers during the in-person learning days that they have at school, that will be part of their day. They will have pre-recorded lessons that they will be watching with exit tickets, exit tickets or assignments to complete after, uh, for social studies and science. They will also have all of their special subject instruction on those remote learning days. Those will be a combination of live and asynchronous classes that students will log into for art, music, physical education. Um, and, um, again, assignments that they're working on and some, um, probably practice and reinforcement of skills that they're also doing.
Okay. Um, all right, well, I guess, why don't we, at this point, and we'll see if any more questions keep popping up, because I'm sure they will, uh, maybe throw it open to the committee itself to see if there's any questions from any of the committee members?
All right, I waited, Thomas.
Excellent, good job.
I did try to wait. Um, no, I just want to say thank you to the reopening committee, um, for spending all that time. I want to say thank you to the, everyone who's attended tonight. It just goes to show how wonderful Norfolk cares for their education. And thank you to people who wrote, um, emails. Your perspective is really, um, important to all of us. Um, I did have some questions. I'm assuming this will be part of the professional development day for teachers. Will there be some sort of mental health, um, S E L, which is social, emotional learning activities for the first month? Um, I, I know people are eager to see what their child may have lost. I'm doing air quotes there. Um, but I do feel that there needs to be some sort of readjustment period. Will there be ways for teachers to learn how to talk to children about the new, the new norm?
Yes, so we are looking at providing professional development for all staff on helping students re-enter the school, uh, with a focus on social, emotional, mental health. So yes, we are planning to provide that. We also have comprehensive plans, um, to support staff members as they navigate what's a difficult situation. Over the spring, um, teachers were providing a lot of support to families and a lot of, um, resources to support children's mental health. So we are working to make sure that staff members are supported in that as well, um, in our reopening plan.
And I just, and a personal, I think that's very important for some of you who may or may not know my own personal situation. We've been living social isolation since December, and my children were able to meet with a nurse. And, um, we just have a family member here with cancer, so. And a guy, and a counselor well before COVID, and they really, it was just so important, and they really turned to understand the importance of wearing a mask and that it was keeping other people safe. And, um, it's just really a bonus. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that you're doing that for the teachers, so they feel comfortable how to talk about the kids and that it's okay. Um, and about testing for staff, are you, will there be any sort of rapid testing? I would hate to see a staff member or student go home and then, oh, I can't get a test or I can't get the results for two weeks, and then you have a sub issue. Is there some sort of plan for rapid testing?
The, the governor's office is actually looking at rapid testing, that mobile rapid testing units that may be available to schools. So we are waiting for some additional guidance on that. Um, but we do have a list of, um, testing sites that are available. Rapid testing is something that we're, we're working and, and looking for guidance and support from this, at the state level for that.
Okay, great, um, I think that's it.
Okay.
I have a question. Um, I'm not muted, okay, that's good. Um, I, uh, I'm wondering, I know we went over what the standard day would look like, cohort one to cohort two, you know, if you're, if you're in the. Cohort one to cohort two, you know, if you're, if you're in the hybrid model. Could you flesh out a little bit or clarify what if, if a family elects for, you know, whatever reason, medical reasons, personal preference, at least initially, to keep a child at home and only access the remote learning platform? So five days a week of remote learning. What level of interaction and support could they realistically be anticipating with peers, with teachers, with the school in general?
So we, again, we just got the information from the state this morning on what that is going to look like and what the state is offering. So we're investigating that platform and that management system to see what is offered for parents. There is a large amount of content available in terms of instruction, live lessons, learning activities and projects for students. We expect that we will be supplementing that with some prerecorded lessons and support from the school. But we're early in that, in planning for the individual students that are, will be learning remotely. We have a comprehensive plan if the district goes that way. But we are, again, just getting the information from the state as to what's available and are working with determining how we can assign staff to support that remote learning and what that supplemental program will look like.
Okay.
We do have some questions I see in the chat regarding how teachers are going to support both platforms. We have been working with the NTA leadership and the negotiation team on this. And we do expect with the school full day closure on Wednesday that teachers will have the opportunity to do some planning for the, for the remote learning days and to create some prerecorded lessons. We are also going to be using our math and literacy specialists and all of our content specialists to support grade level teachers in providing remote learning experiences for students on those days. So we have some staff that will be dedicated to supporting the remote learning platform. And we will be increasing the amount of time we provide to teachers for developing those, that remote learning instruction. And we will also be leveraging some time during that first 10 days of professional development to do some grade level content planning in preparation. Other questions?
I think we got the bulk of them. I think there was, there was a couple of things on here for children that are incoming first graders, since they missed out on a portion of their traditional kindergarten experience. Was there any consideration or was it possible to do sort of the same approach that we're doing for kindergarten this year for those soon to be first graders?
I'm sorry, Thomas, the sound is fading back and forth. Can you just say that one more time?
So the kindergartners last year missed out a portion of their traditional kindergarten experience. So for the first grade, for those children that are now going to be first graders, was there any consideration to sort of doing the same thing that we're doing with the incoming kindergartners this year? And the same sort of scheduling approach? Yes.
There, we are not looking at that for first grade at this time, and the primary reason is because we would not be able to disinfect that much of the building between those two sessions in the, in the hour gap that we would have between morning and afternoon. We can manage the eight classrooms, but we could not do 16 and turn them over in that time. So we are not looking at a half-day start for the first grade. It's just not, it's not operationally feasible for us to do that.
Understood.
Now, of course, the first grade teachers do realize that students miss the end of their kindergarten experience and will be, I'm sure, incorporating more movement breaks, more mass breaks, potentially a second recess to help those kids transition to a full day of school.
Okay. I think we've got most of the questions as I see. I know a few more popping up here.
Thomas, I see some about children who go remote will not have a classroom. Is that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Jen.
Students back to school, and they are going to be remote learning only. They will not be assigned to a teacher. Our classroom teachers will not be managing and overseeing their programs. But we will have staff that are dedicated to supporting remote learning for children that are learning remotely. So they will, if you, if we return to a full in-person or hybrid learning, students that opt out will not be assigned to a class. They will be working remotely with individual support from, from a classroom teacher.
But they still will be graded and their work will be looked at and they will be provided.
They won't have a homeroom.
Yep.
Okay. And then there was another question. Sorry, Thomas. A couple of times it came up. Are, what's, are they sharing desks in the hybrid or?
So you are looking at that, yes, again, with medical guidance. And yes, we are expecting, because we're reducing the number of desks in classrooms. Right now, we are looking at those desks being shared between students, but students will not be leaving belongings at school. So any belongings that students are leaving at the upper school would be stored in locker space. And those desks will be thoroughly cleaned and sanitized on Wednesdays between cohorts of students, again, with the electrostatic spang first, and then with a second sanitization with a food safe product.
Can I ask a question? I would love to follow up on Jen's question. And so for those students who opt for the fully remote initially, they won't have their homeroom or they won't have a teacher, will there be any opportunity, it's sort of two questions, will they have any opportunity to be with their peers? And then if they, if things change and they decide to enter the school, how will that transition work?
Okay, so we are looking at ways that they may be able to connect with peers potentially through special subject instruction or other opportunities. Again, we are, the platform for students that are not returning to school, we are just working on, because we just got that information recently. But we are going to seek opportunities that they could stay, participate and connect with, with peers, but they will not be assigned to a class. If a child, my family decides to transition because circumstances change or they feel it is safe, that child will then be assigned to a class and to a cohort. And teachers, we have students move into school and out of school throughout the year because, and our teachers are very skilled at making sure students transition smoothly and have the support they need to to onboard partway through the school year. So we would be prepared to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you. I know you just said you, you received that information, so I appreciate, appreciate you answering that, though I did come up a couple of times as well. Thank you.
Is there any way for those kids?
There is a question about the child is unable to attend school for medical reasons. In those cases, we will be working individually with parents. When I'm talking about remote learning, I'm talking about families that are choosing to opt out for other reasons. But students that may be eligible for additional supports due to medical reasons, we would, we would work individually with families.
Ingrid, is there any way for the kids who choose to do the remote that they could be their own classroom together?
It depends, and we'd have to look at the age range of those students or whether we can connect that. And that will be something that we will look at once we send the final surveys out to parents and we have decisions. If we have a cluster of students that are in the same grade level and it makes sense, we will look at potential ways to keep those, to connect those students. Any other questions?
Ingrid, would it be fair to say, as you just mentioned, there's going to be a final survey or a new survey coming out to the parents? Where a lot of the specific nuts and bolts of it, would that would be the the time, or is that the best time for, for parents to then give their feedback of their specific concerns?
Yeah, we will publish the comprehensive report on Monday to the public. After that time, we do anticipate that we will have a question and answer session for parents, probably by grade level or by building. And the Special Education Director will also have a virtual live question and answer session for parents if they have questions regarding IEP services or special education service delivery.
Okay. So just for everyone out there that has questions or is putting questions in, I know some of these are very, very specific that I'm scanning through, and I apologize if I missed them. Some of these are to be determined as we get the, we finalize everything, so please stay tuned. We're not ignoring your requests or your concerns. It's just a matter of finalizing and fleshing out the plan fully. So stay tuned. We should, we will get all your questions addressed and do everything we can with the understanding, no plan is going to be perfect, and I think everyone gets that. But we're going to, we're certainly trying to do the best we can to, to make it, the best we can out of a really bad, bad situation.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. People can certainly, send me an individual email if they have a question that wasn't answered tonight or that we missed in the chat. I've had quite a few parents communicating via email with individual or family-related questions, so I'm happy to respond if, if something was, came up that wasn't answered tonight. People can certainly email me.
Great. All right. So again, with the understanding the specifics will get fleshed out later, do we have a motion to accept the hybrid plan as presented?
I move to accept the hybrid plan as presented.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Have any further discussion?
I have a comment, Thomas. Is that okay?
Sure.
I might not have a comment. No, I just want to say to the public, as a parent, as a teacher, I I really have thought long and hard about this, and I believe that I can speak for most of us that we all want our children and as a teacher, want to be back full-time in school. It's easier, it's better all around. However, listening to, I also know that physical needs need to be met as well as safety needs for teachers and staff, and I, my understanding is six feet apart is the safest and best, and I want it to be sustainable. So I do believe the hybrid at this point is the best model because the three feet apart is, is not what I'm hearing teachers are feeling comfortable with, and that is not medical guidance. So I just want people to understand the way that I vote tonight and why I do not believe that full, full-time is not possible for three feet apart. We need the adults in the room to feel safe and comfortable and to guide it so our children have that sense of feeling comfortable and safe, and so we can expect high achievement. And that's why I'm going, I, that's where I'm going to vote for the hybrid. To make, make sure that everybody feels safe and comfortable and the adults can portray that. That's it.
Thank you. Yeah, I would just jump in with essentially echoing those same points. I mean, ideally, a full return of everyone would be fantastic. It's impossible right now. It's, there's, there's no way we can guarantee everyone's safety and everyone has a degree of apprehension that's going into this regardless. So it's our responsibility to try to mitigate that as best as possible. This isn't a perfect plan. Nothing will be, but this is as good as I, I think we have for the moment. But it does give us flexibility should things change for the better or for the worse. Ideally, the better. That's where I'll want that. We've had enough of 2020 and it skipped so far this year. So I have no further comments on if anyone else has anything?
I just wanted to say a quick thank you to everyone involved, everyone who, who had to think through this and make this difficult decision, like Thomas said and Jen said. No plan is going to be perfect at this point. We have to make the best of a pretty bad situation. So I'm in awe of all of you who had to make this reopening plan. So thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of going with the hybrid plan?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so let the record show is five, nothing in favor of that. And again, just to echo what everyone else has said, thank you very much for everyone who's put the effort in and working on this. Been countless hours that have gone into this. I appreciate everyone's, the community providing us excellent questions tonight. We'll keep working on your questions. We'll keep working on your concerns. And we'll make this as, as smooth as we possibly can, given what we're dealing with.
And Norfolk teachers, we'll be checking in a school committee to make sure that your workload is manageable, right, Dr. Lardy?
Yep.
We'll be second. So just have patience with us and let's pray we get a vaccine so we could be back, because it's, it's a lot better. We all want that. We really do. Thanks, parents, and, and, and general people who are here.
All right, so now going from that to voting on the minutes for our last meeting.
I have a lot of thoughts about the minutes. So many.
Kick me off.
Nettle in.
Yes, Midora booked 30 minutes to talk about the minutes. All right. Do we have a motion to accept the meeting minutes from our July 27th meeting?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Assuming Midora is yielding her time on the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And we are looking at August 18th for our next meeting. Does that work for everyone?
Sure.
Excellent. And then finally, we need a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Oh, go ahead, Sarah.
I move to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Assuming no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night and thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thomas.